Good morning, I'd like to call the meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for April 24th, 2018 to order. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
And we know that Supervisor Natale is absent this morning and will be joining us this afternoon, and you have a call.
Out on county business, yeah. Okay.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, April 27th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices.
Thank you. Would everyone rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(inaudible)
For your consent matters, you have items 1 through 51. You also have two off-agenda items that you need to consider. For our off-agenda item number one, you need to determine the necessity to hear the matter.
Move the item.
Second.
Please vote.
Oh, sorry.[106.22][106.22](laughing) Unanimous vote with those members present. And I do need a motion to adopt a resolution commemorating May 3rd, 2018, as the big day of giving, and there will be a presentation to follow after we finish consents.
So move.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. For your off-agenda item number two, I do need a motion to determine the necessity to hear the matter.
So move.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. This is a received and filed agenda item. Supervisor Patrick Kennedy traveled to San Antonio and Austin, Texas, March 26th through March 28th on county business. For item number nine, I do need a motion to drop this item. This is the authorization to contract with KP LLC for consolidated utilities billing and service, bill print and mail, bill online presentment, and customer portal services.
Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And then also, I need a motion to continue item 59. This item is in the afternoon scheduled at 2:00 PM. This is the resolution to name the conservation preserve at May 3rd, the Isla M. Collin Conservation Preserve. We need a motion to continue this to May 8th at 9:30.
So move.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And that concludes the Clerk's notes this morning.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on the Board have any items they'd like to pull or comment on? Okay. I would like the record noted that I'm recusing myself on items 3 and 6 due to potential conflict of interest. And then, we have speakers on item 25. Madam Clerk. Okay. Let me just get to that item real quick.
Item 25 authorized the Department of Human Assistance to increase the pooled authority amount of the subsidized employment program for fiscal year 1718 by $369,936, and to enter into pooled authority contracts with the Lau Family Community Development and Bach Viet Association Incorporated for the hard-to-place component of the subsidized employment program for the remainder of fiscal year 1718.
Okay, thank you. Our first speaker is Angel Barajas.
My name is Angel Barajas from United Public Employees, but we also have the United Public Employees Chairwoman here today that would like to speak on this item. With your permission, can she speak first, and then I'll go ahead and speak second?
Is she D.C. Terry?
She's here. Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. As he said, I'm the Chair of UPE. I also work at Department of Human Assistance. I have over 27 years at that location. And what I want to say about this whole program is that the clients that participate in expanded subsidized program are experiencing misinformation regarding CalWorks regulations and requirements, welfare to work. Some statements border bullying from the people that are manning these contracts. No regards is being given to other barriers such as AOD, domestic violence, mental health, that the clients may be working on while trying to participate in these programs. Confusion for the participation participants, additional stress to meet untrue requirements and continue to work on barriers, being forced to participate in a non-mandated welfare-to-work activity. It's a resource, it's not a mandated activity. Clients now are in unsatisfactory and noncompliant status in welfare-to-work, and that has a reflection on our numbers and things that go over to the state and the federal government for our participation rates. One more failure can be the one that pushes them over the edge, okay? And helps them to more or less give up on not only themselves, but the system too. Information given to clients by persons not trained in required CalWorks welfare-to-work regulations are being pressured for a number of referrals or placements to be considered successful. Welfare-to-work being, welfare-to-work workers are being told to change things in the system that we use in order to change the hours and the dates, and they end up in a position where their numbers don't match, so they're hauled into the supervisor's office, and they're written up or put on, you know, "We're following you, we're watching you." So that makes for a stressful workplace and stuff. CalWorks welfare-to-work, it's unclear and untrue information being given to, by the contractors as to what they really need to do for the welfare-to-work. This puts pressure and stress on my members who work at DHA and have a continuous basis with these clients every day, in order to get them to where they need to go, to encourage them to be successful in what it is they're trying to do, and to move on to a better place. DHA needs to remember that we need to empathize with, not merchandise, the people that we work with.
Ms. Terry, Mr. Serna has a comment.
Thank you. So, I appreciate you taking the time to be here this morning to explain your concerns. I'd like to know, to what extent has there been any direct communication with the CEO's office about this concern?
We've tried to talk with them several times. We used to meet with the program manager over the employment services, and they kind of just shift things off, and they say, "We're doing redesign," and that we need to use it or lose it.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and ask the CEO's office, the CEO and his assistant, if they could look into these concerns and work with their respective executive staff for this department to at least have an initial discussion about some of the concerns that have been raised here this morning.
Mr. Serna, I just want to make it clear that we are not trying to stop the program.
I understand.
We are trying to make the program be successful for the people that we work with every day.
I understand. I just, I always, my antenna go up when I hear these types of concerns, and there's yet to be exhausted a conversation with our executive team, so I just think that's a healthy thing to do.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll follow up.
Great, thank you.
Hi, and my name is Angel Barajas from United Public Employees. Our Chairwoman clearly explained some of the issues and impacts. First, I'd like to thank Phil Serna for making that suggestion, directing the CEO's office to look into those issues. I'd also like to give you happy birthday today. I know it's your birthday, I saw that on Facebook.
Thank you.
So, happy birthday.[562.29][562.29](applause) But definitely, we as UPE, we saw the subsidized unemployment, employment program is a good thing for our community. It's trying to get those low-income individuals, hard-to-place individuals, to have a job and be able to contribute back successfully to our communities. The problem here is, there's three parties. There's the vendors, there's the union workers or county employees, and then there's the county staff. And what's happening is, during this process, we've noticed that there's been some pitfalls and inefficiencies. For example, some of those clients that were referred to get a job, when they show up to receive the job, they're told that the job is not there no more, and then they're recommended to receive placement at a different jurisdiction, different area. Well, that creates hardships for them. Transportation hardships, access hardships, et cetera. And they feel, when they're having a discussion with the vendors, they feel that the vendors are basically telling them, and strong-arming them and telling them, "Hey, listen, if you don't accept this job, we don't have another job for you." And so what we wanted to create is more of an atmosphere where there's alternative solutions to placement. And that's one example. Another example is the coordination and cooperation between the workforce coordinators, which is the county employee, our members, and what is the relationship with, between that and the vendor? Because there's sometimes pitfalls and challenges between that. And we've addressed some of those concerns with the county, with your county staff, but they haven't really given us a direct response. So, we'll continue to work on this issue, make sure that we help to expand the program, and make sure that people that need jobs are employed, but we'd like to also look out for, for those pitfalls and inefficiencies that we believe can be addressed appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're, Mr. Serna, we're just hearing it, we're gonna go ahead and vote on it? You're not asking to pull it?
No.
Okay, all right. Okay, I wanted to note, I forgot to mention it earlier, item number 10, I would like to put on the next agenda until I can satisfy myself as to the details of the response.
Okay, so you want to continue that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that. I have some similar concerns.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay.
Okay, so that just leaves your consent matters, items 1 through 51, with the exception of 3, 6, and 10.
Move the balance.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Okay, so this takes us to our presentation.
We're going to do the big day of giving.
First, okay.
First, yeah. I don't know if they're here.
Let me call that into the record one more time. That was your off-agenda. This is the resolution commemorating May 3rd, 2018, as the big day of giving, and presentation to follow.
Oh, sorry. (pause) Okay. (pause) No wonder no one ever finds it.[781.12][781.12](laughing) I have more sympathy now. We are here this morning to honor May 3rd as the big day of giving, led by the Sacramento Regional Community Foundation. It's a 24-hour giving challenge that starts at midnight and ends at 11:59 PM that day, with the aim to raise millions in unrestricted funds for more than 600 nonprofits across the region. The big day of giving is led by Sacramento Regional Community Foundation, its affiliates and supported by many partner organizations region-wide and really nationally. It's the big day. And the big day of giving has raised over $23 million for over 600 area nonprofits from over 40,000 donors since 2013. And to participate in big day of giving, the nonprofits have to go through a rigorous and transparent process of creating a profile on Giving Edge, which is the region's first philanthropic online resource, sharing information about finances, governance, programs, management, and specific needs to be eligible to participate. Big day of giving participant nonprofits are a large economic engine that offer opportunities for giving, volunteerism, and community involvement that enhance community life and make our region a better place. So the Board of Supervisors at the County of Sacramento does hereby recognize May 3rd as the big day of giving to raise the level of philanthropy in the region as led by the Sacramento Region Community Foundation. And it's fun, too. It's fun to look at all the different groups that are on, that are qualified to raise money this way, and, and, she's too modest, but Lynda Cutler here has done huge amounts to raise a profile on this event. And I know her personally, and I know that she looks calm now, but trust me, it's superficial.[895.56][895.56](laughing) So, I wanted to give you this resolution for your organization and wish you good luck this year, okay?
Thank you so much, thank you.[903.12][903.12](applause) Thank you for this, and I want to thank, thank you for letting us get on, it'll be an off-item, agenda item, whatever we're called, because this really is important to the region, and I really wanted to thank the county for your support of the big day of giving over the last five years. You mentioned that we'd raised $23 million in unrestricted funds, which is important, but I think it's also important to know that we don't do this by ourselves, and that it is a community-wide event. Over 66% of the participating nonprofits are from the county, and therefore, the majority of the funds raised over the course of these years has been to benefit county nonprofits. And we couldn't have done it without the county's help in communicating it, in some creative matching strategies, and others. So, the whole idea is not just to raise money on one day, but this capacity-building effort that you mentioned, and those nonprofits who choose to take advantage of it have the opportunity for training and boot camps and so forth. So, it is, it's a one-day event with a lot of money, but a year-round capacity-building exercise, so, thank you.
I know of several nonprofits that didn't know how to raise money, and they got involved in the program that everyone goes through. It teaches them the importance of their finances and their transparency, and gets their board involved in raising the money, and so that's, that's the part that goes on the rest of the year.
Exactly right, thank you. And thank you for acknowledging that, because that's, people think it's just one day, and it's not. It's a year-round thing. So, thank you so much to the county for all your support.
Thank you.[1020.56][1020.56](applause) All right. Get it right side up.
Yeah, we do.
Bye.
Item 52 is recognizing Henry Sang Master for 30 years of service.
Good morning, Supervisor Peters, members of the Board. With great pleasure today that I get to honor and recognize Henry Sang Master, Senior Highway Maintenance Worker, or Senior Stormwater Utility Worker, excuse me, for Water Resources, on his 30th anniversary, serving the county. I'll do a little brief rundown of his history here, and I will note that you, like Mike Landy, a month ago when I presented, started at the airport. April 4th, 1988, Henry began working at the Sacramento County Metro Airport. Back then, landscape maintenance, he operated and maintained riding mowers, worked in the greenhouse, propagating plants, and did repair sprinklers and trim trees around the airport property. 1990, he transferred to the Department of Transportation, working at Bradshaw specifically in the Trees and Landscaping Division. Drove flatbed trucks, worked gas trimmers, chainsaws, chippers, all those nice dangerous species of equipment that get the job done out in the field. Maintained lots of the median landscaping in the county roadways, which is still in place and thriving. He obtained his first pesticide applicator certificate in 1990, and he also, it's noted, he operated California's first computer-controlled chemical spray truck. And he was responsible for creating many of the maintenance schedules that were used. 1992, he promoted to Senior Highway Maintenance Worker in the Drainage Department. At that time, transportation served drainage for water resources in a large capacity. He upgraded his certificate to a license and added more categories under his license, operated chemical spray rigs, pipe cleaning machinery, backhoes, excavators, dump trucks, Bobcats, and TV trucks that inspect the pipes underground. And he performed countless other tasks and duties on behalf of serving the county residents. He has two grandchildren, Kelly Nicole and Henry David, and he enjoys nothing more than training and bringing up the next generation of employees to continue to serve the county in the manner that he has. Do you want to share a story? And it's safe for sharing, it's not gonna be embarrassing. So this comes from some of his peers. So, while working in the south area, they were cleaning out an open ditch, he was the lead worker on a crew, and the crew had gone ahead of him, and they cleared out most of the vegetation, but they left this large cactus that was growing out of the side of the channel, wasn't necessarily blocking flow, but more importantly, there were a lot of bees swarming around it, so the crew kind of just left it there. They didn't tell Henry, though. So, as they walked, as Henry walked up the channel, he noticed that, and he went back and got basically a machete, and they're saying, "No, you don't need to clear it out." He said, "No, that thing's gotta go, we gotta have this channel clean." Two whacks, and that cactus was down, and he was running down the channel, being stung by bees.[1254.73][1254.73](laughing) But you got it. And I think that, that brief story is really just an example of the commitment and dedication that Henry's had for his job for 30 years, serving the county. And more pointedly, and these are Henry's words, "It's not the computers and paperwork that make the county operate, it's the people. It's our coworkers and ourselves that are responsible for keeping the residents of Sacramento County comfortable and safe." And I don't think that it could have been said any better than that, what we do here in public service. And I just want to, first and foremost, say thank you for your commitment, your enthusiasm, your commitment, professionalism, and dedication to the county of Sacramento, its residents, the department, and congratulations on 30 years with the county.
Thank you.[1308.83][1308.83](applause)
And if you'd like to note anybody in the audience?
Well, I have my, my wife Kyra.[1333.03][1333.03](applause) She's very supportive of everything I do, my mom and dad, and all my supervisors, my managers, my superintendent, everybody showed up today, and I really appreciate it.[1348.83][1348.83](applause) Thank you very much, thank you.
Do you want to have your, do you want to have your parents come down, and wife come down and have a picture taken with you?
Yes, please.
Yeah, sure.
Could we?
Don't get that opportunity that often.
Thank you so much.
Photo op.
Photo op, yes.
Mom and dad, come on down.
Dad's very shy, so.[1372.33][1372.33](laughing)
(pause) Okay. Yeah. There we go. Me. (pause) Okay. Thank you.[1381.33][1381.33](applause)
Item 53 is the presentation of resolution recognizing Capital Region Small Business Week, highlighting BizX, the joint county and city of Sacramento event, May 1st, 2018.
It's a pleasure to be here this morning. We're here to celebrate Capital Region Small Business Week and to present some resolutions to those entities that are involved in the planning and conducting the events for this week. As most of you know, particularly on the Board, two out of three jobs in our economy are a direct result of small business. And as a result of that, we have a commitment year-round, but there is a special week that celebrates our, our commitment in particular, and involves several events to help support those entrepreneurs and small businesses. In 1963, President Kennedy signed a proclamation declaring Small Business Week that highlights the programs and services available through the U.S. Small Business Administration. Here in the Capital Region, we have established our own Sacramento Region Capital Business Small Week powered by SMUD in order to support those folks and celebrate their accomplishments throughout the year. This will be taking place later this month. We have six events, and I'd like to introduce both Lindsay Fukushima, our small business liaison, to highlight those events, as well as June Livingston, that'll talk a little bit more about that as well, and then we'll present some resolutions that we'd like to take a group photo with the Board if possible. With that, I'd like to introduce Lindsay Fukushima.
Thank you.
Thank you, Troy. Good morning, Lindsay.
Good morning. Sorry, I'm a lot shorter than Troy.[1529.15][1529.15](laughing)
Sorry. That's okay.
She's, she's, I can, we can hear her.
Thank you, Troy, and thank you, Board members, for giving us the opportunity to come before you in honor of the Third Annual Capital Region Small Business Week powered by SMUD. We appreciate your support in this effort to acknowledge the important role that our small businesses play in our community, as well as within our local economies. I would like to briefly highlight one of the week's premier events, which is our event, BizX: Marketing Like a Boss. This event is a partnership between the county, the City of Sacramento, California State University Sacramento College of Business Administration, and our emcee, Tina Reynolds of Uptown Studios. The BizX event will focus on marketing experts who will provide stories, strategies, and tips for small businesses owners to learn how to market their own business like a boss. So, our lineup of speakers includes Rich Foreman, CEO and founder of Aptology, who's going to discuss how to develop a mobile strategy; Gina Luon, CEO and founder of the Hacker Lab, who will share her journey into entrepreneurship by discussing how she built a company on little to no money; and our keynote speaker is John Davidson, head of partnerships for GameStop. And John is going to talk about his insights on consumer engagement. So as you can see up there, our event is May 1st, Tuesday, at the Crocker Art Gallery. We're gonna have the speaking sessions from 2:00 to 4:30, and then it's followed by an after-party. And just to kind of let you know where we're at, so far, we are at 200 registrants, so we're, yeah, so we're pretty excited, and we hope to draw on a lot of folks to, and, you know, help them in whatever way we can to market their businesses. So, I'm gonna turn it over to June now, who's gonna discuss the rest of the week.
Good morning, Chair Peters.
Morning, June.
Good morning, Board members and listening audience. I'm very happy to be here, particularly representing all of the different agencies and departments that are here, to celebrate Capital Region Small Business Week, the organizing committees, also for BizX. The week kicks off on April 30th, as you can see, with the multi-chamber mixer. And the multi-chamber mixer is a great event. It gives a business the opportunity to see what local chambers do for us, and what they do for small businesses. They help those businesses prosper, and they provide advocacy for those businesses, they help them network and do many, many great things. And so, that event will, that'll be, then again, will be on April 30th, and we'd like to invite all of you to attend. That event is hosted by the Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce. May 1st, you just heard about BizX: Marketing Like a Boss from Lindsay. This event on May 2nd is California, is Cap, excuse me, is Capital Connection. Capital Connection is the event that brings banks and also other lending institutions for small businesses. Everybody needs capital to make their business run, so that event will give small businesses the opportunity to be able to speak directly with banks and lending institutions. That event is sponsored by the SBDC, the California, the California Regional Small Business Development Center. May 3rd, the next event up, is the Small Business Startup Forum. If your business is interested in starting, those businesses really have a lot of questions about, "How do I get my permits? What permits do I need? In what order do I need to get those permits?" Also, they need to know about employees. Where do I find employees? How do I get help finding those employees? The Startup Forum will answer those questions and many other questions for small businesses. May 3rd also features May Marketplace. May 3rd also features May Marketplace. It is the place where small businesses can come, you can come, and shop with local vendors to look at what they have to offer you. As a matter of fact, we all know Mother's Day is coming up. You're going to want to get your mother something special and unique. So you need to attend May Marketplace to find that special and unique gift for your mother. That event is sponsored by California Capital Financial Development Corporation. May 4th is the last event in the week, and it is the Small Business Awards Breakfast. You can come learn from award-winning businesses about how they became successful. So please attend that event as well. You can find all of these events at capitalregionsmallbusinessweek.org, or you can go to Eventbrite to register. So we have a plethora of events for you to attend, so please do attend. We look forward to seeing all your shiny faces there. And so next up, we will have Troy for the presentation of the resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, June. I'd just like to extend a personal thank you to both Lindsay and June, who do a tremendous job. As you can see, this is a real team effort. In addition to the work that they both do, there is a whole host of folks and organizations that are involved in this process in order to make it a success. As you had heard earlier, we have a great deal of people that are already registered, so we're excited about this upcoming week. I have a series of resolutions I'd like to present, and then ultimately, this group photo. If I could call up, representing the U.S. Small Business Administration, we have their district director, Heather Luzey.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Representing SMUD, we have seed program coordinator Lori Okamoto. Representing California Capital Development Corporation, we have program coordinator Sophia Canon. I will have officially used my photo quota for the year. Representing the Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce, member services director Danielle Nations. Representing the city of Sacramento and the Economic Development Department, Lori Clark Lowry. Representing the city of Elk Grove, economic development manager Rachel Brown. Representing the Sacramento Business Journal, events manager Courtney Guesford. Representing BizX, team member from California State University Sacramento College of Business Administration and Graduate and Career Development Director, Stephanie Francis. And representing county of Sacramento, Office of Economic Development, our small business liaison, Lindsay Fukushima. And representing the Business Environmental Resource Center, our permitting environmental regulatory consultant, June Livingston. So if we could call the board members down and do one large group photo? And we do have one more. While the board is coming down, we have, representing the Capital Region Small Business Development Center, director Scott Leslie. So, yes, if we could go here, that would be great. Thank you. I'll take the first one.
Okay, thank you.
Want to thank Troy Givens for bringing this in front of us, and to all the recipients, that small business provides two-thirds of the jobs in the United States. So we need to do everything we can to nurture those companies and new companies, and we appreciate all you do. And good luck at your expo.
Item 54 is the presentation of resolution honoring History Day awards.
Okay. Ask Dr. Bob LaPierre to come down to the podium.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Bob LaPierre, and I've been involved with History Day for over a decade. I now coordinate the special awards that are given to these students. And I'm again privileged to present the 2018 History Day winners of the Board of Supervisors Awards, and am on behalf of the Sacramento County History Day and the committee appreciative of the Board of Supervisors' recognition and support of this wonderful program. Each year, almost 300 students from over 20 Sacramento-area schools participate in County History Day, coordinated jointly by the Sacramento County Office of Education and the Center for Sacramento History. Fourth and fifth grades compete in a poster category, whereas sixth through 12th grades participate in a junior and senior division, creating projects in five categories: papers, websites, documentaries, exhibits, and performances. In addition to their striving to progress to state and eventually national competition, they are also eligible for 18 special awards given by various local organizations, such as the Board of Supervisors Award. The state finals are now held in our region every year in May, thanks to the generosity of William Jessup College in Rockland, where hundreds of students from all over California will be competing again for awards and a chance to go to national finals. I would like to present the students who won this year's Board of Supervisors Award, and they will receive a resolution from the board. From Miraloma High School in the senior division, we have two sophomores, Christian Stan and Jason Wong, who created a website, The Platt Amendment: An Inequitable Solution. Christian and Jason, if you could come down, please. And I'd also like to present from Monterey Trail High School in the senior division, both juniors, Kyra Saturn and Nafisa Timmons, who created the documentary, Dried Out: The Struggle to Fairly Distribute California's Water. Kyra and Nafisa, please come down. I'd like to present to each of you the resolution from the Board of Supervisors in honor of your award for your project this year. Would it be possible for the board to come down for a photo op with the students?
Before we do that, I'd like to have the students take one minute or half a minute and explain what your project is. You first, no, you first. So you have to stand in front of the microphones? And use your outdoor voice.
Okay.
Pretend your mother's yelling at you.
So we did a documentary on the history of water in California, basically its journey and how Southern California is using.
And we also talked about how Los Angeles wouldn't be what it is without the help of other places, such as like Mona Lake and Owens Valley, who have like, I guess you can say their environment has like desert, desolated, and it's completely diminished. And Los Angeles has strived to, just strived because of them.
And tell us the name of your high school?
Monitra High School.
Okay, thank you very much. Gentlemen?
Hello. We did our project on Cuba, The Platt Amendment, and our exploration was about the, seeing how America and the Cubans got along in their relationship, and the true history about like, how history is written by the winners, and how we want to explore what actually happened during the Platt Amendment.
We also explored how the U.S. acted as a big brother towards the Cubans, and which kind of went against the narrative that the U.S. is this perfect country that only does good, because this was also a small, dark spot in the U.S.'s history, since what it did was not exactly for the Cubans' benefit. And then we also explored to see how it still impacts us today, particularly with Guantanamo Bay.
What level are you in at Miraloma? Are you seniors?
We're both sophomores.
Holy moly, more to come. Okay. Well, congratulations to all four of you.
I think Supervisory totally wants to issue an editorial on the first project that was mentioned about, Southern California water.
Just a brief comment, the water wars continue. The history is being written this very moment over in the Capitol. I was there this morning on behalf of a bill there, but interestingly enough, those who opposed it were from, largely from Southern California, and some from the Central Valley. And those who supported the bill were from the Delta and Northern California. So the history is continuing to be written about water in California. So anyway, congratulations on your project.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, I just want to, you know, if you haven't done so and participated in this as a judge, I strongly encourage everybody in the room to do so. It's a lot of fun. And they're always looking for judges.
Now, you want a picture?
That would be great.
The board come down?
I also want to thank the parents and the students for suiting up to be here today. That respect is appreciated.
Item 55 is the presentation of resolution proclaiming April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Sacramento County.
I'd like to invite Sheila Boxley, president and CEO of Child Abuse Prevention Center, to come up.
I brought a sidekick with me.
So we have a resolution today from the Board of Supervisors to make sure that everyone knows that every minute of every day, a child is reported abused in California. Scientific studies confirm a direct link between child abuse and a significantly greater risk later in life for substance abuse, criminal behavior, suicide, eating disorders, smoking, and premature death from chronic disease, cancer, and other serious illness. That covers a lot of things. So the Center for Disease Control and Prevention ranks child abuse as America's number-one public health crisis. And according to the University of California, Berkeley for Social Services, approximately 3,800 children in Sacramento County were found to be victims of abuse and neglect. For the last 40 years, the Child Abuse Prevention Council of Sacramento has partnered with multiple entities to develop effective prevention programs to ensure parents have the education, support, and skills they need so that every child is cherished and no child bears the lasting scars of abuse and neglect. On behalf of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, I'd like to present you with a resolution recognizing April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Well, thank you so much, Madam Chair, members of the board, John Lambeth. So pleased to be here with you. I don't get down to these chambers very much anymore, but it sure brings back a lot of memories of very late-night Planning Commission meetings. Sort of makes the hair on the back of my neck stand up a bit. But this is such a special day, a special month for us. Thank you very much for recognizing all the efforts of the Child Abuse Prevention Center. One of the reasons that my wife Carson and I have been such longtime supporters is the amazing results that this organization gets. Sheila and her team do an amazing job. If you look at shaken baby syndrome, where they got involved, they had an 87% reduction in shaken baby. I know you all are so familiar with the Birth and Beyond Program, keeping 95% of those folks that CAPC deals with out of the child welfare system, even folks that had already been in it. So it is an amazing organization that gets results. And I did want to say a special thank you to the board. You all have been such wonderful supporters of this organization. We appreciate it each and every year. This is a special year, our 40-year anniversary. We've served over 100,000 individuals in that time, and we have a big party on Thursday night. I hope you can make it to Punch Bowl Social for our party celebrating the 40th anniversary. Thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to Sheila.
Thank you. One of the main values that we've had all along is partnership and collaboration. And so I do want to give a shout-out to Sacramento County, because it has indeed been a public-private partnership in addressing child abuse and particularly prevention. We haven't done anything alone. There's a bunch of people, some of them in the back here, and I'll hope that they'll all stand up in a minute, partners as well as my A-Team staff, who have really done magnificent work. work and are very dedicated. As I jokingly say, it's not the stock options, it's the dedication to the mission that keeps people doing this work. I wish there were stock options, but there are not, as it turns out. And I do also want to shout out there a couple of other organizations who have been around a long time, who are having birthdays this year, and that includes La Familia at 45 years, and Well Spaced Health at some much larger number, which I can't remember at this moment. But there really has been a long history of the nonprofit sector thriving and being stable and providing continuous services, which is a real bonus to us. But we also want to take just a moment and recognize a couple of people who have already been recognized within their own organization. Kaiser Permanente has really stepped up significantly in terms of funding and support for child abuse prevention and treatment and education, and they actually underwrote all the expenses for Child Abuse Prevention Month, which is this April here in Sacramento County. But we wanted to highlight two really amazing partners of ours, champions. Okay. Okay. Dr. Michelle Evans and Dr. Dorothy Wilborn. Both of them have been dedicated to this mission, and they received, both of them, the highest honor that Kaiser Permanente gives for their work in child abuse prevention and treatment and education. And just as a highlight, Dr. Evans is currently the Chair of the Child Death Review Team here in Sacramento, which is a very large commitment of time and energy. She also was the person who initiated the program in North Valley Kaiser Permanente, and served as its initial medical director. Dr. Wilborn has served on all kinds of committees and commissions, including the Children's Coalition, the Oversight Committee, Black Child Legacy, and was part of the team that created the mandated reporter training for physicians. So, these are really champions that we want to honor and point out, as well as to thank Kaiser Permanente, and I think they'd like to say a couple of words.
Thank you, Sheila.
On behalf of Kaiser Permanente, we would like to thank the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors and the Child Abuse Prevention Council for this recognition. We really value our relationship with the Child Abuse Prevention Council. It's grown over the years, and we work closely with the CAPC on the Safe Sleep Baby Campaign, on the Child Death Review Team, and on a community toolkit. We look forward to continuing our work with the Child Abuse Prevention Council, with Child Protective Services, and with law enforcement to advocate for our children, to prevent maltreatment, and to strengthen our families and communities.
Thank you. I just want to add, I'm Dr. Dorothy Wilborn, and this resolution and recognition acknowledges vital collaborative efforts that help protect and strengthen generations of children and families. Having the opportunity to accept the Board of Supervisors' resolution in our hometown of Sacramento is also deeply meaningful for Dr. Evans and myself. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, and thank you, Child Abuse Prevention Center. Thank you. And now, talking about the team, I would love for all the folks back here, as well as our public partners, Michelle's somewhere here, Bruce, others, stand up so that you can see what a team really looks like, and this is just a drop in the bucket of all the people, because those people who are helping somebody right now at this moment can't be here, so we honor them specifically. And thank you to this board and its past members, because truthfully, this board made an historic decision 20 years ago, and shifted resources and reallocated them to make a commitment to child abuse prevention and to build the infrastructure that exists today. So, thank you for your leadership. And happy birthday.
Thank you for your good work, Saul.
Item 56 is the Presentation of Resolution Recognizing May is Bike Month in Sacramento County.
I have a good. How are you?
The month of May 2018 will be celebrated as Bike Month here in Sacramento County and throughout California in recognition of the fact that bicycle transportation is an integral part of our multimedia, multimodal, transportation system, and thus receives support from federal, state, regional, and local transportation government agencies. Bike Month is designed to inspire people of all ages to ride bikes in their daily activities, including for errands, recreation, fitness, commuting, and maybe just for fun. The county Sacramento will sponsor, in cooperation with our neighboring communities, the city of Folsom, Rancho Cordova, the county of Eldorado, the 8th Annual Great Scott Bike and Walk Event on Sunday, May 6, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM for the exclusive use of bicyclists and walkers along segments of Scott Road and White Rock Road. So, we have Marilyn Bryant here to give us some warning, but for the moment, I'd like to give you this resolution that recognizes May as Bike Month.
Excellent.
All yours.
Thank you. Well, Susan said the important things, and I just want to emphasize again that the Great Scott Bike and Walk Event is really something to see. I'm looking forward to it. It's first Sunday in May, so that'll be May 6 this year, and having the cars and the motor vehicles off the roads, and just being able to bicycle and walk, it's a family event. People can go at whatever speed they like, because there are no motor vehicles. We have the entire road, and I'm a firm believer in destination bicycling, and so this year there are food trucks, and so-
Oh, that is progress.
Yeah. So, we really appreciate the support. Everything that the county can do to make people on bicycles feel safer when they're bicycling, whether it's on the streets, or closing the roads, encourages people to bicycle, and because it's a choice that everyone makes, how they're going to move around during the day. And when people bicycle, as we know, they help relieve our traffic congestion, air quality improves, and we conserve energy. And so, here we are in another May is Bike Month, which just gives people, it's a reminder in organizations from all spectrums, from the craft breweries to the bicycle advocates and bicyclists get involved and do things. So, it's taken on a life of its own, but it still needs some underlying support, which we appreciate from the county.
Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you for your years of support for this event.
We don't actually have any bicyclists this large, but we use this as a tablecloth at our bike-
I thought it was a shirt for me.
I know, I wouldn't do that. We call it, I call it a bed sheet. But it's on Bike to Work Day, which we're celebrating on Tuesday, May 8. The website, mayisbike month dot com, will have it, is Friday, May 18, which is the National Day, but we've tried that for a couple of years, and our participation is cut in half, because so many people don't work on Fridays in this region, especially a lot of the public sector. So, we welcome bicyclists who commute to work on Bike to Work Day, and we put this out on the table, it's a tablecloth.
There you go.
This is what this year's shirts look like, in a smaller version, and in white. This is for our volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Marilyn, just before, again, I would just echo what Sheriff Peters said. Thank you for your leadership. And I want to thank, since we have Department of Transportation folks here on another item, but I know that there's a lot of coordination between Sac County DOT, I think Rancho Cordova, and Folsom for this event, and there's been, over the years, as the event has grown, certainly to not only make for a safe and fun event, but to work with local landowners and others who may use that route, you know, certainly for in and out, but also for a through route. And I just want to thank them while they're here, and certainly for all the coordination, and I trust you're going to have good weather for the event. I know you've had some rain and sunshine in different years, and so hopefully you get plenty of sunshine, but anyway, thanks.
Thank you, and good luck. Okay, we have an off-agenda speaker, Dan Adherot, on Cannery Avenue.
Dan Adherot?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you guys for hearing me. I'm Susan Peters, I live in your district, and I'm leader of Neighborhood Watch, I can't replace Township 9. I've been on this several times, fighting crime. I went down, five months ago, I was really disgusted about American River turning into a garbage dump, and all the toxic stuff, and I took it personal, I got involved. I went and talked to the homeless people, I got over 200 homeless people now involved helping me. Started out with 10, now we got over 200. We're doing it seven days a week. For the last five months, we've been cleaning riverbanks every day. We need your guys' help. We got Jeff Harris on board, he came down, City Councilman Jeff Harris, he came down, he saw what we're doing, he appreciates what we're doing. And I tried contacting you guys, but I never heard back, but I know you guys are busy, but I've been trying to reach you guys. We'd like to get your guys' help too, because we've got the county helping it, the county cleaner people come by and pick up all the trash, and realistically, we picked up at least, probably not exaggerating, probably between 20, 25 tons of trash in the last four and a half months. That's a lot of trash off the riverbanks, and that's what me and the homeless have done. And I know you guys got a homeless problem in the city. I know you guys got a big issue with that right now going on. But my crew, and all French Green Bear Cut and 16th Street, you couldn't find better people. They're nice people, they're not hoarders, they don't leave huge messes around, they keep their area clean. And I was wanting to know if there's any possible way, because my crew is helping me, and they keep getting tickets by the county, I know you guys got no camping ordinance for that situation, but is there anything we could do to help with my crew? Because we're going along the riverfront, cleaning up the riverbanks and trying to save our community as best we can. They have pride. Since I started with this, he's one of them here, he's one of the first members. He's joined me in the very beginning, and he's been there with me every day, and we seriously need everybody's help, we're, they appreciate. Some homeless do have issues, granted, they are, you know, they got bad apples in every bunch, okay? My crew, they're helping over 200 people, are just regular people like you and me, they're helping us every day, and they're not asking nothing, just taking pride in our city. And we want your guys' help. I'm asking, is there any way you guys could help us with keep the riverbank clean, with like more trash cans along the parkway, and like baby porta-potties? Because over on between Bear Cut and 16th Street, I guarantee you, they will not be messed up or destroyed. The homeless people there are all on board. We got over 200 homeless people in that area alone, they're on board with us, and they're keeping that area clean. Your county, you guys, your county officials, they'll tell you. The ones that go around cleaning up the riverbank, it's clean. And I've got, now I'm over to Northgate, I am getting the Northgate homeless people involved. I've been going over Garden Highway and Arden Highway, talking to them, you got a few bad apples over there, but, you know, the people there are helping, and they're joining up. And we're getting bigger and bigger, and we need your guys' help. What I'm asking you, Susan Peters, especially you of all people, is to come see for yourself. I'm going to invite every one of you guys to come look at and see for yourself, because seeing is believing, and just like Jeff Harris, I invited him, he came. I want you guys to come see for yourself. Just name a date and time, I could leave you guys my address and our email address, you guys contact me, come see for yourself, before you guys pass judgment, but I really like you guys to come on board and help us out as well. And maybe put, oh, I'm sorry, do you want to say something?
Well, your, time is up, and I wanted to say thank you for your efforts on the parkway, and Mr. Cerner has a comment.
Yeah, thank you. So, I appreciate you taking the time to be here today to explain what you're doing, it is appreciated. And obviously, with an asset as large as the American River Parkway and the Dry Creek Parkway and the rest of our regional park land inventory, it's obvious to almost everyone, including this board, that it's going to take a team effort, including working with, you know, people like you that really care about the parkway and the condition it's in, so I do appreciate that. What I'd like to suggest is that you take, hopefully she has a business card with her, but our Assistant CEO Nancy Newton to your left, our Parks Director Jeff Leatherman, I don't see in chambers, but that's the person you probably ought to speak with in terms of, you know-
I think he has been in touch with Mr. Leatherman.
Okay. But that's, because you mentioned several times that you've reached out and you're not hearing from folks, that always concerns me. But I would suggest that you get information from Ms. Newton, and contact our Parks Department. That's going to be the agency that you would coordinate with. And you mentioned 25 tons every-
That's bare minimum.
Over what period?
Five months.
Yeah, we're pulling 20 tons a day out, just the county maintenance folks themselves.
I'm telling you the truth, I'm not waiting it. I'm just being honest, I'm just using as example, as like-
No, I understand, I'm just, just to use the same kind of metric that you're using in terms of how bad the condition is, we're all very well aware of that, and I hope you don't think that the county is not paying close attention. If you watched what we spent our time on last year, we have a much more robust system in terms of park maintenance today than we did just a year ago, so. But again, it takes all of us to, you know, to join this effort, and I appreciate you being down here to explain what you're doing.
You know how happy it makes me, the feel to hear that, because to be honest with you, just for a quick second talking here, to be honest with you, for a while, I was beginning to think the county wasn't on board with us, speaking of that.
I'd respectfully ask you to educate yourself a little bit more about what the county's been doing and what we're doing compared to years past. It's, to me, it's very impressive, the amount of staff time, the staff deployment, new programs that we've, especially on the lower reach, in the area that's in my district, in addition to the one that, the part of the parkway that's represented by Supervisor Peters. And I'd be happy to, you know, if you want to contact my office, I'd be happy to sit down and let you know what we're doing.
Yeah, that'd be great. Also, your county official cleaners guys, people, I'll just make this real brief, they're awesome. They be coming by, you got with their Bobcat tractor and everything, helping out and everything. I gotta say, they're the awesome group. You guys are doing a great job of that.
Yeah, and that's a new program.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, good.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you for being here today.
Okay. Item 57 is the 2020 Census Update and Authorization of Participation.
Judy Robinson? Oh, I'm sorry, my notes say Judy Robinson. Were you going to introduce this?
I will actually give the presentation, and I'm going to introduce Judy as well, so thank you, Supervisors, and good morning. Appreciate the opportunity to kick off this important initiative for the 2020 Census in Sacramento County. I'm going to briefly discuss how the census data is used, how the census will be conducted, including some of the challenges and opportunities that we will have before us, and then finally talk about next steps and answer any questions that you may have. And yes, I would like to introduce Judy Robinson, who is our county Census Manager, and she's done a phenomenal job already getting us teed up for this, and I don't believe I see Mr. Zachariah in the audience today, but Rami Zachariah, the Director and Chief Information Officer of the county, has done a great job helping us update our addressing and information for the federal database. So, very quickly, I know that the Supervisors are well-educated in the census process, but for the benefit of those that may be watching from home, let me briefly describe how the census data is used. Most people know the census to be used for purposes of redistricting for congressional districts, as well as state legislative districts, but you may not know that it's also used to define boundaries for school districts, as well as voter precincts. So, it's important that people participate in the census and that Sacramento has a complete count. Obviously, it determines the number of seats that we have in the US House of Representatives. We make policy decisions on the federal and local level based on census data. And if you can hearken back to your days in college and doing research, you've probably used some census data there as well, scholastically and scientifically. And last but certainly not least, the data that we collect will help distribute billions of dollars of federal funding to our local communities, and that's very important, and one of the reasons why we do this initiative. So, the process has actually begun. It started last year in participation with the local update of Census Addressing, or LUCA. And this is a federal program where cities and counties are given the opportunity to update addressing information to get the most complete count when we start, and we've already been in the process of that. Our information technology people have helped revamp some of our information, and we've updated and contributed thousands more addresses to the federal government. The deadline to complete that process is the end of June of this year. There's going to be some changes in this next census. This will be the first census that will be conducted primarily online. The federal census website, which is www.sensus.gov, they predict about a 50- they predict about a 58% online participation rate. So this year will be an instrumental first year to use technology in the census data process. Additionally, if people are not signing up online, there will be some follow-up efforts and outreach. And these are done by people called enumerators, which is difficult to say quickly when you're giving public testimony, but at any rate. They will be actually hired by our Federal Census Bureau to go out in the neighborhoods and try to track down what are called hard-to-survey areas. And this leads me into my next portion of this presentation, which is to talk about some of the challenges that we may face in the census process. One of which is the homeless community that we have in our, and around the city and the county. And the great part about the census is that it uses data very scientifically. So we already know some of the census block areas that have been difficult to survey, and we are targeting and identifying those areas. People that may be more non-traditional would have the opportunity to, instead of mentioning a physical address specifically, they can identify a geographic region, which then can be translated into a census block and counted for that purpose. So it's a broader use of data to incorporate more people that were more traditionally difficult to count. So that's important. Also, we will be conducting the point-in-time count for our homeless population in the year prior to the census. I remember doing that point-in-time with Supervisors Serna and Natoli when I first came to the county. So that data will be incorporated and used by our federal census people as well. One of the other things that I'd like to mention as well, though, is that we, our census coordinator has done a fabulous job already doing outreach with some of our community partners that work with the homeless community to let them know that we will be conducting these efforts. So that's another third part of the stool that will help us with that difficult-to-survey population. Another challenge that we may have is that with the new online format, some people may or may not have web access or may not be as tech savvy. So we will have to make sure that we have good information and communication about how they can conduct the survey online and participate in that manner. Also, you know, I think it's important to mention that there are some people that have distrust in government. And for some people, that is a cultural experience. Some people, it may be a personal experience. But we need to be realistic about that as a challenge. And so in our efforts, we are making sure that we do a lot of outreach that is culturally competent and that we are making the best use of our community partners, the people that have already had that earned trust in communities, to talk about why participating in the census is so important and what that means for the local communities. I think I've stressed enough about how important this is, so let's go on to next steps really quickly. I look at this as a great opportunity to work with our cities within the county. You know, we talk a lot about the city of Sacramento as being a concentrated area where people that are homeless, but there are people that are homeless among us throughout all of our cities. And we've already met with some of those cities to talk about who we should be talking to for the census, how they would like to participate with us. We're very excited to be leading the collaboration with our cities, because this is a great way for us as staff to get to know each other better and develop those working relationships and as well, giving great customer service to them. Because they may not have the kind of capacity that we do to go out and reach out with our community partners. So that's a really great opportunity for us. One of the things that I noticed is that, you know, being fairly new to this community, just a little over a year now, Sacramento has a very impressive network within our community organizations and partners. There is a wide web of people that are helping other people on a variety of different platforms. And we can use that web to help get the outreach out. So another piece of good news is there may, might be some state funding for this effort. The governor has allocated approximately 40 million for statewide census initiatives. We'll see how that pans out as the budget gets worked through, but there is a possibility for some funding as we continue forward. And finally, I think that, I would like to thank Supervisor Kennedy for participating in the regional convening meeting. This was on the 19th. And I believe it was held at Mia Familia?
La Familia.
Oh, La Familia, thank you. And that was a well-attended event with a lot of our community partners and government agencies as well to kick off the official census process. So we'll be doing a lot of work prior to today and then today with our official kickoff and resolution for the county. The actual point in time that the census will occur is April 1st, 2020, although we are going to be well-positioned and doing a lot of work prior to that. And I don't know if there was any sense of humor on the federal government part to make it on April Fool's Day or not, but I find that kind of entertaining. Any questions?
Mr. Natoli.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Nancy, a couple of things that I wanted to ask about. So if you said it's largely online, is there still going to be a mailed questionnaire to folks? Because you've identified some of the populations might be a little harder to, to reach. But there are a number of folks, some because of reasons you cited, maybe for other reasons, that are not online in their homes and, but would respond to mail. They can still receive their mail. Believe it or not, folks still have landlines too, although this is mostly done through the mail or through personal communication. So what is the, the approach? Maybe just describe it a little more succinctly, if you know, as to what's going to, you know, be the approach? Is that, you know, is there going to be initial mailing to folks? And are they going to use IRS data? Or what are they going to use for doing that? And then how do they determine whether somebody's going to be online or not? Is it, is it a choice or is it something that's going to be required?
Well, it is a, a choice that people have to do this. And the federal government is actually drawing from a number of data sources, you know, the IRS being one of them. You know, when you think about it, there's a lot of data that's collected by governments and that, that the Federal Census Bureau already has access to. So they pull in from those multiple data sources to develop their, for lack of a better word, I guess their mailing list for the census. And there is a mailing that is sent out to select statistical sample, because obviously, if you're going to be doing, it's a huge effort. So they take a sampling that is statistically significant, they send it out. People still have the opportunity to go on, online. But if they don't, there is a follow-up with the federal government. But this, there's some details that are being worked out presently, one of which is there is a identifying number that the federal government was thinking, okay, this would, how they would identify people as whether or not they responded to the census. It's just by a unique number, that they would then input online to let the, the federal government know that they had responded. I think this is still being worked through, whether or not they are going to have that unique identifier. So we're still in the preliminary stages as far as how they're going to track the feedback and response.
So is there concern, for example, say some in the, in your senior community, but others who are not online? Maybe because of, you know, you know, some disadvantaged communities where income just doesn't allow them to have monthly internet. And so I guess I'm, I'm curious about that. And I guess I, maybe I want to just use another point in, in my question, though. And that, I know that there was a significant undercount in the Delta the last time around. It resulted in loss of eligibility for federal funding, particularly through the federal block grant, Community Development Block Grant Program. They used American City Survey, which mailed the folks. A lot of folks get their mail at PO boxes if they receive it at all. You have a segment that's a farmworker community who, physical address may be all one location. And if they don't send out enumerators, which we, again, did, working with the House of Redevelopment Agency, and were able to, just last year, requalify the Delta, which had for decades been qualified as eligible. And because the sample didn't show, it wasn't a valid sample, we had to prove, they made us prove it, we spent the money. And yet we lost the opportunities. And so I'm concerned that, that, but also, I think, and you didn't touch upon it, but I think it's a point we need to, to talk about a bit. I think that some of the concern about documented status is going to be a barrier for folks to respond. And I think just, you know, current environment being what it is. And so I don't know, again, maybe the discussion that, you know, Supervisor Kennedy hosted at La Familia, maybe got to the core of some of that, and we got more time to talk about it. But I think, you know, enumerator is busy with folks, and that doesn't necessarily mean someone's going to answer the door, they're going to answer openly or not. But we were looking for an accurate count. And in addition to the count, then there's the follow-on to income levels and, you know, how folks would, you know, self-categorize themselves relative to the choices that are provided in the census, which, you know, has a bit of contention to it as well. I guess, I just, I think it's so important, because if you miss it, then for 10 years, this county and the cities and the community either benefit or don't from the opportunity that's presented during the census. And I, and I think you talked about in your, in your comments. So I guess my, my question being then, what sort of outreach in the rural areas of the county, but also for those who may have limiting English-speaking abilities? And how are we going to do counts? Again, because I don't think schools can be deployed to be a part of that. I think there's some separation between school districts and the information because of protections. And so I guess I'm curious, because, you know, this is more than just, you know, following the federal government's rules and calling it good, because I, I think there's some deficiencies there. And I think what it does is puts a potentially serious disadvantage in this community for a whole decade. And I think we had evidence of it the last time, and hopefully some of those have been brought to your attention. Obviously, you weren't here. But I know for certain, we have an example. And I think we can use as a concrete example in, you know, in the Delta, where you had a whole undercount that basically disqualified us for several years. And it wasn't our fault. It was, the census was inaccurate, and they used a third-party vendor. So I guess I'm curious, Nancy, has there been some discussion regarding these issues? Or I don't, what you're seeking from us today, obviously this is a report. But I, I'm concerned that we, we face a specter potentially in this community of being seriously undercounted. I heard about the homeless population, that's several thousand. But I think you got several tens of thousands of folks that could be undercounted in some of the other sub-populations that I've, you know, asked about here.
Supervisor Natoli, there's no doubt that we have some geographical challenges as well, and thank you for pointing that out. I've jotted down a few notes as you were speaking. I noticed Judy was taking furious notes as well, so thank you. We do have, obviously, the data from the last census to target some of the areas that were not counted to the level that we would like. So we have that, and also we will be employing enumerators again. I appreciate you bringing forward these issues, because that helps us in our efforts for targeting as well. You know, this is the message that we need all of the supervisors to be talking about as far as the importance that we do outreach to people. So any feedback that you can provide to myself or Judy as far as who would be great points of contact within local communities that you know? Because these are the trusted people in communities that we're going to rely on to make sure that we get a good count. Because I, as myself, can't go out and say, hey, trust me, I'm here to count you. That's not the approach that we're taking.
Can we deploy enumerators? Can we have our own cadre? Again, it might even be worth us, if we had to pay somebody to be an enumerator, you know, on a, you know, have a, you know, a census day. I, again, I don't know all that structure, and I don't want to spend a lot of time this morning trying to get a better understanding. It just seems to me, though, that we need to not only take this seriously, but recognizing there are some deficiencies just built into, you're going more on online. You know, they're using third-party vendors. There's no longer the federal government employing census enumerators to go to every household if they don't hear from somebody via the mail after two mailings or whatever. And so, you know, it's a far different, it's vastly different from what you described. Now, it may or may not be a good thing, but I think it leaves some holes there in the federal government. They don't, if they send California or Sacramento County less money, that's all the better for them and bad for us, so.
Understood.
Ms. Serna?
Thank you. So I think all of us have been hearing lately and through the media about the federal government's disposition concerning some of the changes in the questions that would be used in the census survey instrument. And what I'm hearing, and again, it's, you know, from what I hear on the radio mostly, that there is going to be possibly some new questions introduced that I think to Supervisor Natoli's point, may make it even more difficult for us to attract interest by certain populations, namely those with questionable immigration status. Or as you mentioned in the beginning of your presentation, Nancy, those that maybe have a cultural aversion to, to participating. So what can you tell us today about the, the status of the development of the, the survey instrument? Or perhaps Supervisor Kennedy has some information to share on that front. But that's definitely of concern to me, and I'm not sure what, if anything, a county can, can do about that. But if it turns out that the census is going to be somewhat considerably different from 10 years ago, and it makes it more difficult to, to acquire the participation that we want, I would like us to be prepared as best we can to do what we can to be as inclusive when it comes to, again, to Supervisor Natoli's point, making sure that places like the Delta and farmworker communities aren't going to be, you know, intentionally or by chance left, left out of the exercise.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. I think that the answer to that question, at least that I can give today, is that that is still to be determined, right? I mean, we know that at least one of the questions regarding citizenship is in a legal process right now, is being litigated. So I don't know what the status of that will be or what the federal government's response will be to that particular issue. But we will keep you updated on, I think that, seems like that is of the primary concern based on your comments.
And do we, do we have a, I know our CEO, it looks like he's teed up to comment here, but perhaps you can answer this too, Nev. Is there any kind of formal process for us to, a county to, to challenge? The, you know, the results or, or any aspect of the survey instrument that the federal government gives us to use?
You kind of read my mind. One of the things that we are going to be engaging with our lobbying efforts is that what recourse do we have if that question comes in? As Nancy and Judy both are very, as they're in the presentation, our sensitivity is that we want to make sure everybody gets counted. And there's, of course, there's a fiscal ramification, but also what's the composition for our population? What kind of services we're providing? So we want to be very careful that we get everybody to participate in this. And whatever barriers that we have, we want to knock them down as much as we can.
Okay. As long as we're going to keep our thumb on the pulse of that, I guess I'm comforted to hear that. But it's hugely important. I think we, we can all agree that we need to be as accurate as possible.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. I would just like to add on a personal note. I've done a lot of work in the diversity field, and it's very important to me as well. So that is something that I will be tracking.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? We need to approve the resolution here. Does your motion?
So move?
Thank you.
Please vote. Thank you.
Unanimous vote. Item 58 is the US 50 Integrated Corridor Management Project Presentation.
Good morning, Reza McGeezy, Department of Transportation. In collaboration with cities and counties along US 50, Caltrans has developed a pilot project to better manage traffic on the freeway and adjacent surface streets during incidents. This project is referred to as US 50 Integrated Corridor Management. Brian Alkison, Acting Chief of Traffic Operations with Caltrans District 3, is here to talk about that project.
Thank you, Reza, and thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board, for this opportunity and to address you today. My name is Brian Alkensell, and I'm here to represent the California Department of Transportation in partnership with SECOG, Sacramento County, Yolo County, Eldorado County, and the cities of Folsom, Rancho Cordova, West Sacramento, and Sacramento. For the past three years, we have been coordinating our efforts to improve conditions on the US 50 corridor for our mutual customers, the traveling public. We are at a point now where we feel a need to present this information to our elected officials through public outreach. So far, we have presented to the city councils of Folsom, Rancho Cordova, and this is our third presentation. My purpose today is to define what integrated, oh, let me see if I can. My purpose today is to define what integrated corridor management is, where it will be initially implemented in the region, why we chose the US 50 corridor, and how it will benefit our mutual customers. Integrated Corridor Management, or ICM, as it's called, is exactly what it sounds like. It is a more integrated approach. It is a more integrated approach to move people and goods through a transportation corridor by optimizing existing infrastructure. ICM is considered the most efficient and effective approach to improve corridor-level, multi-jurisdictional transportation system performance without increasing roadway capacity. ICM is not only the, the connecting of state, regional, and local intelligent transportation systems, it also requires an institutional commitment to collaborate and communicate better across jurisdictional boundaries to provide a more seamless experience for each road user, because in fact, the public only sees and recognizes one transportation system, regardless of jurisdictions. Agencies across the United States are embracing this ICM approach. In California alone, we have six corridors that are in the process of ICM implementation. Some are now in operation, including the I-15 in San Diego, the I-80 in the Bay Area. We are fortunate to have a district director that places a high priority on transportation system management and operations and ITS projects, and we're also fortunate for the partnership we have with Sacramento County DOT. We're fortunate also to have the regional agency that has set a vision to be a testbed for innovation in our area. The US 50 corridor will be the first multimodal ICM in our region. Although our focus will be on the US 50, the goal is to develop a, a system that will be scalable and allow connection of adjacent corridors, including 599, 65, and 80, which will eventually result in transportation system management at a regional level. We have identified the US 50 corridor as our pilot corridor to implement ICM strategies due to the level of congestion and the number of incidents the corridor faces daily. Additionally, the US 50 corridor already contains many of the parallel facilities and ITS infrastructure for ICM integration. Our focus along the US 50 corridor will be from Enterprise Boulevard to the west to Cameron Park Drive in, in Eldorado County on the east. Segment two, which is the middle portion of, of the 37 mile corridor, will be our initial focus. Due to the considerable investments that have already been made in this area, including ramp metering, bus carpool lanes, advanced signal technologies, vehicle detection, our CCTV cameras, our changeable message signs, as well as an infrastructure of light rail and the American River Bike Trail. So why did we choose US 50? US 50, our data shows, consistently experiences the second highest number of incidents, collisions, vehicle hours of delay, and vehicle miles traveled in the district, based on data gathered from our TASSIS database and from the CHP CAD, which is our computer aided dispatch data. The two main causes of congestion are when demand exceeds capacity or when capacity is decreased. Recurrent congestion occurs when demand exceeds capacity, normally during peak commute hours where there are too many vehicles on a given roadway. Non-recurring congestion, which I'd like to discuss today, occurs when the existing capacity of a roadway is decreased due to incidents, which restrict the number of lanes available for vehicles to use. These incidents include collisions, disabled vehicles, debris in the roadway, planned or emergency closures, bad weather, and special events. Incidents account for 60% of congestion delay in our area. When incidents happens, happen, it creates havoc on our freeways and local streets for many hours. And we had a very recent example of this on the 99 just yesterday, where a tractor trailer hit one of our CMS signs and closed both lanes of northbound traffic for about three hours.
As long as you pause there, define the difference between an incident and collisions.
Thank you for the question. So a collision involves a, a vehicle hitting something. An incident could be anything. It could be weather related, it could be a ladder that falls off of a truck. It could be anything that would restrict that, that capacity.
So an incident does not include a collision?
That's correct.
So the, the sign that got run mowed down by the truck yesterday, that was a collision, not an incident?
That was a collision, that's true.
It's still there this morning. It was just a, had cordoned it off, just north, right to south of the Twin Cities.
How do you get enough of one of those things down?
I don't know. I look at the metrics.
I had never seen anything like that in my career where, where it was level. It almost looked like a breakaway post when I know it's not. And we do have emergency crews out there that are going to remove that today. So it had encroached on the frontage road there.
Did you have anything further?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Brian, so basically, back to your slide, so in over two years, you went from like seven or 8,000 collisions to over 36,000 collisions? So you have like a five or six, six, 600% increase?
Oh, I'm sorry, on this, on this slide, what?
Oh, it's all incidents versus collisions?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. That's what I was asking about the definition, as I read it that way too.
So the, the number of incidents is all encompassing. It'll be much larger than the collisions. Collisions are a part of that.
Okay, so why do you use the two different years then?
The reason for that, that's a good question, is for the collisions, which is 2014, our current database for our collision data is our TASSIS database, which has a collision, there's a backlog of information there. We have more recent information on the incidents, which comes from our, our CHP partners.
And just one other question, so was the I-80, when you had all that construction, is that why you think you saw, I mean, such a high number of incidents? Or is it just more traffic, or?
You know, good question. It actually, this current year, and I've seen other years as well, it's, it's pretty similar to this. We didn't see a significant increase in, over the years. And we will be getting more information, newer, 2017 information from the CAD and 2016 from, from TASSIS.
Thanks Brian.
Thank you for the question. So these next two slides are probably the most important slides. This, these two slides explain what our current response to incidents looks like and what ICM response will look like. So I'm over the Transportation Management Center in District 3, which is located in Rancho Cordova, and currently, we call that our TMC at Caltrans. Currently, the TMC manages traffic incidents by notifying the public about existing conditions and allowing them to make their own decisions on how to respond to the situation. In severe conditions, when lanes are blocked, the CHP will direct traffic away from the incident, and then travelers are left to make their own decision. When incidents occurs, travelers have two options. One, they may choose to sit in the congestion frustrated, or two, they may attempt various unorganized detour routes in many different directions, as illustrated on this slide. These unorganized detours have been increasing as smartphone applications, such as Waze and Google Maps, provide route guidance recommendations to travelers to avoid areas of congestion. This often results in movements through areas not designated for this increase in traffic, such as residential streets. This is the ICM approach. An ICM response allows state and local agencies to actively and strategically notify and redirect travelers onto predetermined routes with optimized signals and ramp meters using coordinated traveler information. The traveler information, signal timing, ramp metering, parking management, and transit are interconnected and integrated. This creates a more direct path to detour traffic away from residential streets and back to the freeway. The US 50 corridor contains an array of freeway, arterial, multimodal transit, parking, bicycle, and pedestrian networks that are independently maintained and operated. The responsible transportation management agencies along the corridor have strong working relationships and have collaborated on solving regional transportation issues over many years. What is presently lacking are the necessary technologies and capabilities to take our partnership to the next level by allowing our independent transportation systems to talk to one another. So this is an example in diagram form of a fully integrated system that we're hoping for, that consists of local traffic signal systems, local transit AVL systems, local parking management systems, rail systems, vehicle detection systems, and freeway management systems, including ramp meterings and CMS, all talking together. And those little wifi signals are, we want our, our field elements, we want our, our field systems to be able to coordinate one to another without even having to pick up a phone and call Doug Moss at the TOC, which we, we do now. We call it the human ICM, where we, where as we see information, we are collaborating at a person-to-person level, but it will save us significantly on our, our incident response time if this, this can be done automatically. So the ICM benefits that I'd like to just briefly suggest, we will have improved corridor mobility, which means improved travel times and reduced delay in the corridor. We'll have reductions in neighborhood intrusion based on our predetermined routes. We'll have streamlined and better coordinated response to incidents. We'll increase, we'll have an increase to alternative mode choices by providing better real-time information on travel conditions, and we'll reduce greenhouse gas emissions. This next slide talks briefly about some of the costs that are involved. The state has committed $46 million programmed in the SHOP as an amendment for improvements to the state highway system, and we estimate the county's portion to fill that gap in infrastructure, approximately $3.7 million. This includes design, construction support, ITS infrastructure and communications, development and integration of the central control system, and the integration of the local agency arterial management system. We've listed some of the available federal and state local funding opportunities that exist, and we will work in collaboration with the county to secure some of that funding. We are, we are scheduled to complete our portion of that project, US 50 ICM project in 2023 for Caltrans State Highway System. This process actually outdates me. This process started with StarNet, which is a Sacramento transportation area-wide network and associated ITS MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, that outlined the long-term vision and goals of the ITS deployment, the structure of the regional ITS architecture, regional communications network, and responsibilities in maintaining the ITS. This was done back in 2005. Since the time I've been here in 2015 to 2017, we have been in the process of developing an ICM, a US 50 ICM implementation plan, which was recently finalized and published, and that plan documents much of what I've presented to you today and is available to the public. The US 50 ICM meets the goals of Star, of the StarNet agreement, and the SECOG Smart Region ITS architecture provides the long-term vision and goals for ITS deployment. And SECOG has also been heavily involved in the proceedings that we've taken place over the last three years. Our next steps are what we're doing today, is trying to reach out to our elected officials with public outreach and just make sure that everyone understands what ICM means, Integrated Corridor Management, and how it will benefit our mutual partners. We also are looking to finalize a more formalized partnership with our, with our partners through a, an ICM charter, which we are now finalizing and circulating to all the agencies that I mentioned at, at the beginning. And we're, we continue to have working group meetings on a monthly basis with the cities, counties, and regional partners that we have, as well as a quarterly meeting with the Public Works Directors, where my director, Amrji Benapal, is, leads that effort. This is a high priority for Caltrans. It's something that we feel will be helpful to this corridor, as well as other corridors in the region, again, without increasing capacity to our roadways. And with that, I, I do have time to take questions, and I have a couple of gentlemen here to help me answer from our planning department, also the county DOT.
So I have a question. There's so many acronyms in transportation, it's hard to keep track of them all. On your cost sheet, you said it's a 2018 SHOP amendment. What's, what's SHOP?
So the SHOP is a State Highway Operations and Protection Program, which is, this is how we fund our non-capacity increasing projects, and ITS will not increase capacity.
I, and then you're suggesting that the county would put in $3.7 million out of local funding with STIP and CMAC and Mezzera and gas tax, and I guess I don't understand why you don't cover the whole thing, really, that's, to get to the heart of the matter.
No, that's.
The $3.7 million is dear and precious to us to get our roads repaved, and diverting that money is, you know, going to be very hard to do.
Okay. Well, let me take a stab at it, and then I'll, I'll invite maybe Doug or, or someone to, to talk about this. A lot of that money that we're talking about, the county has already moved forward on, on several improvements to the, the corridor, especially in the segment two, where we're going to initiate the project. They've already helped modernize their signals and the detection out there, and some of that additional funds is just to fill in the, the gaps of, of that infrastructure. For example, Caltrans, right now, along that corridor, if we were just to look at that corridor, at the Traffic Management Center, I have two CMS signs in the eastbound direction that can get, provide traveler information, and those are at Howe Avenue roughly, and at Mather, and the westbound direction at Scott Road and at Bradshaw. In order for this to work on, on the state infrastructure side, we need more opportunities for people to receive that traveler information. We also need more detection throughout, and most importantly to me, and probably to Doug, he'll probably agree, is the verification of those incidents is really important for incident clearance. The first stage of incident clearance is detection, second is verification. And a lot of times when we're trying to manage these incidents, we are basing our decisions on what reporting parties are telling us over the phone, and sometimes that part, that information is not completely accurate. Having cameras and detection will help us to have a more coordinated response. So cameras and then also the CM, sorry, excuse me, the changeable message signs, which give us our, our traveler information. Our vision is, at the same note, to have increased detection on the local arterial routes, to be able to identify which routes have heavy volumes. By doing that, if the system itself can, can, can find that, it can relay that information to.
Okay, you, you explained that in detail about why you think it's important. I, to me, it's, I have questions about the amount of money.
Okay.
That you're, I mean, if it's that important to the state and your department, I don't understand why you can't include, you know, less than 10% into your budget.
Well, here's what we did provide. So with our SHOP project.
Unless you're telling me that the county has already spent some of this $3.7 million.
What has been done today is basically, they have identified potential funding sources. We are very mindful of the impact of this project to the other county priorities, and we are going to make sure that when the actual funding source becomes available, that it would not have any, will not have any impact on other county priorities and commitments. In other words, if the, the other funding sources could be providing the, the needed funds for this project without affecting other portionment for the county, we will definitely support that. But that has been a question we have been asking, and to date, all they have done is just identifying potential funding sources, and we don't really know yet how it's going to play out.
No.
Well, I'd, you know, like to be kept informed of the progress towards that, I, because I'm honestly more concerned, concerned with road conditions in the unincorporated areas.
And I'm sure also, I just would like to say that going forward, because of the coalition, the partnership that we've built with the, the regional and, and local agencies throughout the corridor, we, we will take advantage of that partnership and prioritizing these type of projects for federal, or for state and federal funding. One source that we've been heavily looking into is the congested corridors, SB1 funding for, for this type of work, where they're already looking for innovation and technology to, to help with these types of things.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nentoli?
Yeah, I just could ask, because you talked about earlier that would help from diverting traffic through neighborhoods and get it back on to the freeway system and so forth. So I guess I'm curious, is this, there may be other applications out there for folks to use, and they're either in-car and/or smart devices that guide them away from accidents or, you know, traffic slowdowns or whatever. And we're seeing this in communities, I'm sure you are too Brian, throughout the district, but throughout California, probably the nation, and, you know, it's, it's showing itself in diversion through areas that were never anticipated to take. to take traffic loads during, you know, these types of events. Like, obviously, there's circulation patterns that people could do in an emergency. So, what you have here, is this tying to some master system? Like, I can see some savings, both my headaches, but also wear and tear if the number of incidents that were diversions begin to occur, congestion occurs or contributes to further congestion in neighborhoods or along other major transportation corridors. But is this just for us, i.e. Caltrans and county and cities and whoever else participates to manage the system, and, but does the information feed into, you know, say, the wayfinding apps or whatever they are that are out there? And, you know, I'm not one who uses them. I still use a map book, but, or stay in traffic. But I guess I'm curious as to, you know, what kind of benefit accrue besides, obviously, managing, you know, kind of the system-wide approach to this? Because I would concur with, you know, Supervisor Peters, that, you know, with all the tremendous needs and backlogs, that, you know, I can see the value in this. But I guess I would like to know, you know, beyond helping folks coordinate and keeping people, you know, on the right routes that they're intended to use, is this something that's going to be utilized by the general public, or is it more for those that manage the system, which is not unimportant, because we can, you know, adjust signal timing and ramp meters and such? But, so I guess I'm curious from, you know, President Doug or you, Brian, and I just, I'd like to know.
I'll take a stab at that. Yes, so, there's a lot of things that will be available to the public, including, yeah, all the information that will be on our changeable message signs or posted online on QuickMap. And also, one of the things that's really important is, we can use this ICM to fight technology with technology. And what I mean by that is, when we create this path of least resistance for folks to, you know, take because of adjusted signal timing, and it's all working in coordination, where the ramp meter is also allowing people back on the freeway after the incident, because of that path of least resistance, Waze and Google and all those other applications will pick up that this is the preferred route. You'll have that opportunity. So, we basically can kind of steer those types of applications just by providing that path.
Okay, so that does feed into it. Obviously, they get information from different sources. I mean, they get real time immediately. I mean, the changeable message signs are great, but there is a lag there at times. I mean, because obviously you're managing a larger system, and people have to make sure they, you know, I don't know if you wait for the CHP to respond to accident or but
We do.
Somebody's other apps, you know, if somebody calls in and says, you know, there's a tire in the road, I guess they take it as being, you know, if you're a subscriber, that's facts, or then people begin diverting, you know, at least as I understand, again, not that I use the app, so.
Yes, yes, sir. We also have, we have a partnership right now with Waze, where we've included those type of applications where the public can communicate back to us as a public agency. And we put those notifications on our map as well. The Caltrans Worldwide Web Portal keeps that information, and it's freely accessible by others. So, we do take into account not only the CHP incidents, as they are reported from CHP, we also take into account the information we get from the traveling public, and sometimes one is faster than the other.
Yeah, it is. I guess I just, just a last note I would just make, too, and maybe hear from our folks, but it's just, I think that once people get used to making a diversion, whether there's traffic up ahead or not, that, and that's what we're seeing, and I know I've been working with our folks and some of your colleagues in Caltrans, and some areas along the I-5 corridor, where they're, you know, they're scooting over to the River Road, you know, 99 and fiber, and they're, you know, and the diversion is daily now. It's not because there's any incident necessarily upstream.
It's a commute route.
It's a commute route, so, yeah.
Not a diversion.
So, now we got thousands of cars coming through communities that never, you know, saw that in a week's time in some cases, so. I guess I'm just curious, so what value do we see from the local system if we were to put some money in here beyond, I think, what Brian's responding to?
Well, obviously, as an operator, this information is important to us to be able to communicate with the other agencies and have our devices working together so that we are coordinated and not just running up into each other. I want to clarify, on that three point seven million, most of that cost is work that we would eventually be wanting to do anyway. Folsom Boulevard, there's a stretch that has no communication. We need to put fiber in regardless of whether the ICM project works or not. There's intersections that we will be trying to upgrade anyway. By this money, when we do it, it helps plug into the ICM. But it's funny that we're going to end up coming to see you about someday, whether it happens. And we actually feel we're better positioned to get money if we're partnering in a bigger project. You know, there's more value to the people that are holding the purse strings, so. But, yeah, from an operator's standpoint, I think, as Brian said, the providers out there, the third-party providers are getting this information, and if they, if their algorithms say, hey, it's better to go this way, you're going to go this way. Now, it's an interesting point you bring about, putting more congestion where we're not used to seeing it. But the alternative is, they're still running around, you know, those cars are still out there doing something. So, if we can better management, and our goal is to move them faster, make the duration shorter, so you have hopefully less cars affected, along with less emissions, that whole package.
Okay, thanks, Doug.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost?
When you redirect traffic, are you also changing the stoplights? Are you, is there any change in the management of how the stoplights are working? I know from time to time during high traffic hours, you can push people through a little longer on a light to kind of manage some of the congestion. I was just curious to know, does, are you doing that also?
Yeah, that's, one of the components is that we would have, for automation, we'd have pre-approved plans. We run models, we say, okay, if two lanes are closed on 50 eastbound at Bradshaw, or three lanes, what kind of diversion do we expect, and what kind of timing can we implement? Emergency timing at the off-ramp, and then down Folsom Boulevard for two signals, and then back on, change the plans and have that happen automatically. We also have the feature with more cameras from our operations centers to manually control traffic if we have to. I think you saw that at our operations center a while ago. So, those are things that we would be doing to manage the traffic. So, yes, locally, we'd be making changes, the information, both local, one of the components is that we'd have more dynamic messaging on the arterials, so that we can give more information to help guide these, the traffic there. So, it's getting them off of the freeway, back, and then back on as quickly as possible. The other component, just this week, we had two lanes blocked on Watt Avenue, northbound at the bridge, people had nowhere to go. If we had ICM, we also could have got them over to the freeway in a more efficient manner, down Jackson or Folsom, so that we could have reduced some of the backups that we were seeing there. So, it's, it works both ways.
But for something like this, if this goes really well on Highway 50, in order to manage other areas that have problems, like Scott Road, you'd have to have that fiber, the fiber
Some kind of communication, yes. But it can be wireless. There are other alternatives. It doesn't have to be fiber everywhere.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no further comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
That concludes your morning session.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to have a closed session right away, or do you want to have lunch first and then meet at 12?
Yeah.
Get it out of the way? Okay, so, are your staff ready for, so we'll recess to closed session at about two? I'd like to call this meeting the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for April 24th, back in session. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you.
For your afternoon items, Madam Clerk, did you want to continue? I have a motion to, I need a motion to continue item number 39 from the consent calendar. That's the authorization to apply for and to accept Federal Emergency Management Agency Hazard Mitigation Grant for Woodside Flood Risk Mitigation Project, and we're continuing this to May 8.
So, we just, we don't need a reconsideration? We can just continue it?
Correct. I did receive confirmation from Robin that we can do that.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Unanimous vote. And then I also need a motion to drop item number 60 and item number 61. We did receive a request to withdraw the appeal and the waiver that came in this afternoon at about 1:10. Item number 60 is the Britain Appeal Fee Waiver Request for the Planning Commission Approval of the Fruitwood Court Tenanted Parcel Map. Item 61 is the Britain Appeal of the Planning Commission Approval of a Tenanted Parcel Map Special Development Permit and Design Review for a property located on the western end of Fruitwood Court in the Fair Oaks Community. The environmental document is a negative declaration with mitigation measures, an addendum to the negative declaration with mitigation measures.
Okay, any questions about that? If not, I'll make the motion to
Unanimous vote.
And we do have one report out from closed session, if you're ready for that.
Okay.
The Board of Supervisors unanimously voted to initiate two items of litigation, which shall be known as the County of Sacramento versus AT&amp;T California, and the County of Sacramento versus Purdue Pharmaceutical et al.
Thank you.
And then that leaves us with our nominations.
Excuse me, can I just, Madam Chair, did you take item 59 already?
Oh, yes, we continued that this morning.
We continued it.
Oh, you continued this morning?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know that. Okay, thanks.
It's to May 8, 10:09.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Okay, so, we're on item 62 for your nominations. For today's matters, you have the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council. Ms. Frost?
Continue to May 22, please.
And then, last but not least, the Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council. Ms. Peters?
Please continue to May 8.
And that concludes your nominations.
Okay, I think you had enough discussion with Mr. County Executive?
Yes, we did.
Supervisors, Mr. Serna?
Thank you.
It's your birthday, we'll let you go first.
Thank you. I believe the folks in the back room there, the AV folks, have this ready to come up on screen, but as is customary about this time of year, for the last five years, I just want to make everyone aware that unsupervised is going to be playing this Saturday, and this is our annual fundraiser concert dance party, if you will, that benefits the Department of Human Assistance and Department of Health and Human Services Scholarship Program, which I believe last year awarded, I think, just over sixty or sixty-one one thousand dollar scholarships to deserving college-bound students, some of the brightest kids in our community, and quite frankly, some of these kids have had some very difficult challenges in their life, and it's always rewarding, not only to play music for this cause, but to be at the scholarship award ceremony and to meet the parents and to see where the proceeds go. It's always very rewarding, and I always make sure that they understand, it's on behalf of this Board of Supervisors, that we go out of our way to try and match what our employees raise. That's how this all started about five years ago, was a commitment to match what our employees had been raising for years, each year, with likes of bake sales and other types of events, which, again, I think just speaks to the heart that our employees in this organization, Sacramento County, have, not just for the commitment to their daily work, but to the commitment to their broader community. So, again, as you can see, unsupervised is playing this Saturday at 5:30, and we're going to be at the California Museum this year, in the courtyard that I think all board members are familiar with, and I would encourage you to attend if you can, and invite your friends and family, it's always a good time. Thank you.
Okay.
Happy birthday, Phil.
Happy 50th.
Thank you.
And I have no comments, so.
Okay.
Is there any other business?
I have no other business.
Okay. Meeting's adjourned.